Would you please stand for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and welcome to the Board of Aldermen's meeting for Monday, July 1st. First order of business is minutes of the previous meeting. Hope to approve?
Second.
Are there any changes to the minutes? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. We are outside the rail, so we will go to Chief Larson first for the fireman ceremony. Welcome, Chief.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone, and to the families and friends and loved ones of our firefighters being promoted or appointed tonight, welcome. The first promotion tonight will be from the rank of lieutenant to deputy chief, and that will be Scott F. Mangan. Scott began his career at the City of Rutland Fire Department as a substitute firefighter in 1998 and became a career firefighter in 2001. Scott is certified as a Vermont Pro Board firefighter two, instructor one, and fire officer two. He's a member of the Vermont Task Force One, the State Urban Search and Rescue Team, where he also serves as one of two search team managers in the state of Vermont. In addition to that, Scott maintains certification as an NFPA 1403 live fire instructor. He has credentials in emergency operations center management. He's a task force leader for the FEMA and USAR teams and a rescue team manager in the FEMA teams. Scott was deployed to Houston, Texas for Hurricane Harvey in 2017, North Carolina during Hurricane Florence in 2018, and he's also a member of our aircraft rescue firefighting team. In his spare time, Scott enjoys teaching other firefighters at the Vermont Fire Academy, where he works as an instructor. Scott earned a bachelor's degree in business administration with a minor in economics from Castleton State College. Scott is being supported by his mother, Lo, his son Liam, daughter Emma, and wife Michelle LaRose Mangan. Scott has asked his wife, Michelle, to pin his badge on his uniform, and please help me congratulate Deputy Chief Scott Mangan.
Could you please raise your right hand and repeat after me? I, Scott F. Mangan.
I, Scott F. Mangan.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will execute the position.
That I will execute the position.
Of deputy chief for the City of Rutland Fire Department.
Deputy chief for the City of Rutland Fire Department.
And will bear in equal right.
And will bear in equal right.
And justice to all men.
And justice to all men.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
According to the law.
According to the law.
So help me God, so help me God. Under the pangs and penalties of mercy.
Under the pangs and penalties.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, Scott. Thank you. Thanks for everything you did.
H. Bride, who began his career at the City of Rutland Fire Department as a substitute firefighter in 2007 and became a career firefighter in 2011. Seth has certification with the Vermont Pro Board as firefighter two, instructor one, and fire officer two, and is an instructor at the Vermont Fire Academy. Seth is assigned to A shift and coordinates our emergency incident reporting and all of our information technology systems. Seth is being supported tonight by his daughter McKenna, his son Keegan, and his wife Bethany, and he's asked his daughter McKenna to pin the badge on his uniform. Ladies and gentlemen, congratulations to Deputy Chief Seth Bride.
Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Seth H. Bride.
I, Seth H. Bride.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will execute the position.
That I will execute the position.
Of deputy chief for the City of Rutland Fire Department.
Deputy chief for the City of Rutland Fire Department.
And will bear in equal right.
Will bear in equal right.
And justice to all men.
Justice to all men.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
According to the law.
According to the law.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Under the pangs and penalties of mercy.
Under the pangs and penalties of mercy.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Chief, before we move on, could I just ask with the three deputy chiefs now, who will be covering what shifts?
Seth is on A shift.
Okay.
Scott is on B shift, and Bill Lovett, who's still out of the country on his vacation, is still on C shift.
Okay, thank you.
Our next promotion is from the rank of firefighter to lieutenant, and that is for Charles J. Ragula. Chuck! Don't be nervous, Chuck. Chuck began his career at the City of Rutland Fire Department as a substitute firefighter in July of 1996, and he became a career firefighter on July 1st, 2004. So happy anniversary, Chuck. Chuck is certified as a Vermont Pro Board firefighter two, an instructor one, and fire officer two. He's a member of Vermont Task Force One, which is the State Urban Search and Rescue Team, where he holds certification in swift water operations, boat operator, high angle rope technician, structural collapse operations, and trench rescue operations. Chuck is also an instructor at the Vermont Fire Academy, where he holds a lead instructor two status. Because Chuck enjoys challenges, in his free time, he's a nationally registered emergency medical technician paramedic. He's also an EMS instructor one and is our American Heart Association instructor for CPR, AED, and first aid. He's also an instructor for the prehospital trauma life support curriculum two. Chuck is a certified child safety seat technician and coordinates our team of seven technicians at the department. He's currently enrolled at the Community College of Vermont, where he is seeking his associate's degree in professional management, because he's bored. Chuck is joined by his wife Becky, his son Tyler, who is following in his dad's footsteps as a member of the Rutland Town Fire Department, his daughter Caitlin, his parents James and Rose, and his in-laws, John and Diane. And Chuck has asked his wife Becky to pin on his badge. Chuck will be assigned to B shift, and he will be our EMS or emergency medical services coordinator. Ladies and gentlemen, please join me in congratulating Chuck Ragula.
Could you please raise your right hand and repeat after me? I, Charles J. Ragula.
I, Charles J. Ragula.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will execute the position.
That I will execute the position.
Of lieutenant for the City of Rutland Fire Department.
Of lieutenant for the City of Rutland Fire Department.
And will bear in equal right.
Will bear in equal right.
And justice to all men.
Justice to all men.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
According to the law.
According to the law.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Under the pangs and penalties of mercy.
Under the pangs and penalties of mercy.
Congratulations.
With promotions comes new career firefighters starting, and tonight we'll swear in Jenna C. Elliott to the rank of firefighter. Jenna began her career at the City of Rutland Fire Department as a substitute firefighter in 2018, and tonight is sworn in as a full-time firefighter. She comes to us with experience on the Rutland Town Fire Department, and Jenna holds Pro Board certification as firefighter one and two in hazardous materials operations. Jenna will be assigned to A shift, and she'll be assigned to coordinate our surplus equipment project in addition to her duties as a recently certified child safety seat technician. Finally, as a certified CrossFit instructor, Jenna will oversee the physical fitness and wellness programs on A shift. We welcome Jenna's parents, Kevin and Chris, her sister Angelina, and her boyfriend Travis, and Jenna has asked her father to pin the badge on her uniform. Help me in congratulating firefighter Jenna Elliott.
Could you please raise your right hand and repeat after me? I, Jenna C. Elliott.
I, Jenna C. Elliott.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will execute the position.
That I will execute the position.
Of firefighter for the City of Rutland.
Of firefighter for the City of Rutland.
And will bear in equal right and justice.
Will bear in equal right and justice.
To all men.
To all men.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
According to the law.
According to the law.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Under the pangs and penalties of mercy.
Under the pangs and penalties of mercy.
Thank you. Congratulations, welcome aboard.
Thank you.
And without further ado, last but certainly not least, is the swearing in of firefighter Jonah J. Farrell, who began his career at the City of Rutland Fire Department as a substitute this year and will be sworn in tonight as a full-time firefighter. Jonah comes to us with experience on the Alton Fire Rescue Department in New Hampshire and with the United States Forest Service in the Flathead National Forest in Montana, where he served as a wildland firefighter. Jonah holds Vermont Pro Board certification as a firefighter one and two in hazardous materials operations, in addition to his National Registry Emergency Medical Technician designation. Jonah earned his Associate of Science degree from Lakes Region Community College in New Hampshire in the fire science curriculum. Jonah will be assigned to B shift, and he'll coordinate, interestingly enough, our wildland firefighting operations, in addition to overseeing the shift's physical fitness and wellness programs. We welcome Jonah's parents, Chris and Nicola, and sisters Hannah and Abigail, and Jonah has asked his mother to pin the badge on his uniform. Congratulations firefighter Jonah Farrell.
Could you please raise your right hand and repeat after me? I, Jonah J. Farrell.
I, Jonah J. Farrell.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will execute the position.
That I will execute the position.
Of firefighter for the City of Rutland Fire Department.
For the City of Rutland Fire Department.
And will bear in equal right.
Will bear in equal right.
And justice to all men.
And justice to all men.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
According to the law.
According to the law.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Under the pangs and penalties of mercy.
Under the pangs and penalties of mercy.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Welcome.
Congratulations.
Thanks again for giving us the time to do this. We're gonna go up and have cake.
But first, we're gonna step down and allow you, the firefighters and the families, to take what pictures they'd like to, so we're gonna stand down for a few minutes and let the firemen just get that picture-taking process. So we'll call the meeting back to order, and we are still outside the rail. And I believe Representative William Knott would like to address the board.
Yes, sir.
Welcome.
Thank you for the opportunity to come in. I will keep this brief, but I did wanna give the board legislative update on a few things that I thought were pertinent in regards to Rutland City. First off, I wanted to update you on the buprenorphine. I do wanna thank this board and the Police Commission for the letter that was sent up, because I really do think it had an effect. Buprenorphine decriminalization, it passed out of the committee I'm in, Judiciary, and I thought it would be passed by the end of the year. And the letter that came up from Rutland City, I think it was very powerful. I think that it caused a lot of people to think, because, you know, it wasn't from members of one party, it wasn't from half the board, it was from everyone. It was from everyone on the committee, everyone on the Police Commission, and that really was powerful, and it really made people take notice. So instead of going to the floor, the bill went to the Human Resources Committee, where it's essentially stalled right now. As Alderman DePoy, Mayor Lehrer can attest from being up there before, no bad idea truly dies, but at least it can move a bit slower. So I do expect that folks who are interested in this, either as a one-off, or quite frankly, there's some people who see it as the first step towards decriminalization of all drugs. I think some people will push, but I think the fact that Human Resources Committee has this letter, the Senate has the letter, the governor has the letter, I think the hill is a bit steeper than it was before, and I do thank all of you for that effort. There were a couple other things I wanted to mention, just in regards to future issues that could impact Rutland City. It's been made clear that when the legislature is back in session in January, there are three top priorities for passage. One is paid family leave, one is the minimum wage, and one is cannabis tax and regulate. Paid family leave, I did vote in favor of. That's something that would come out of individual employees' payroll taxes. Employers could contribute if they wanted to make working for them a bit more attractive. Minimum wage, I voted against. I thought that Rutland's economy is still building, it's still work in progress, and increasing the minimum wage to $15 an hour would simply be a burden that many local businesses could not survive. And then the third one is cannabis tax and regulate. And that passed out of the Senate, it's currently in the House and Committee, it's a high priority issue. What's gonna happen with that is, when it passed the Senate, there was an opt-out option. So if a community did not want to house a retail cannabis establishment that could hold a community-wide vote to vote against it. In the House, there's been talk about changing that to opt-in, where a community would hold a vote if they wanted to. So I'm not certain how that's gonna finally present. It's certainly a conversation that Rutland City could have. One thing I would just ask everyone to keep in mind as we talk about it is, people who served on the board with me a couple years ago will remember, we had a gentleman come in and ask if he could sell fireworks in the city. And we declined that, and I still think that was the right thing to do. The police were against it, the fire department was against it, and now there's fireworks store, a stone's throw from the city line, and I know I hear fireworks at my house every night. As far as tax and regulate of cannabis goes, it's estimated that with it being an illegal activity, we've still had about $200 million in cannabis sales in the state of Vermont on the past year, or two years ago, when they had the best numbers. There is with the bill, a local options tax, 2% or 3% is what it's looking at. So the one thing I wanna make sure is injected into the conversation is, we certainly know if Rutland City doesn't allow these establishments, some community around us does, and that means we're gonna deal with impaired drivers, we're gonna deal with the other challenges that come with it. So I certainly hope we can have a serious conversation about whether or not we wanna take advantage of the local options tax, so that we do have extra money not coming off the property tax owners in order to take care of increased road patrols if necessary, or what other other things might come up. So that's something that will bear further talk, but I do think all three of those are something that you can expect to see passed in the legislative session fairly soon. Whether they get passed the governor's desk is another matter altogether. And then the last thing I wanted to mention is Act 250 overhaul. And when I first got elected, before I went up to Montpelier, I met with the mayor, and this is one of the issues that he expressed concern in, and I think that was a well-founded concern. Everyone inside this rail's been involved in politics. We've all heard that this is gonna be horrible for a community, or this is gonna devastate this, this is gonna devastate that, and quite often, when something passes, there's an adjustment, but life goes on. And I just have to say, as far as the Act 250 overhaul goes, every bad thing you've heard, it's gonna be worse than that. Yeah, enjoy that. So imagine a situation where someone wants to expand a business in Rutland City, where they wanna open a new business in Rutland City, and they have to justify how having a paved parking lot will affect global warming, and they have to address how they are going to offset that. For small business growth, for bringing in larger businesses, it will be a nightmare for Rutland City and many other communities in the state. So I would certainly hope that when the time comes, and I will be back to talk to this board and the mayor as needed, but this is something that we'll hopefully see a pushback from many communities in Vermont. And Rutland City would be wise to work with all of our neighbors in Rutland County, because there's not a single municipality in Rutland County that this benefits. And when the time comes, we'll really need to push on this. It's currently still in committee. Representative Terranzini from Rutland Town is on that committee, so perhaps we can get more information from him, but everything I've heard, it hasn't come to the floor of the House yet, but everything I've heard is significant cause for alarm. And the last thing I just wanted to mention was, you know, this is my first year in the legislature. And I have to say, you know, my brief time, one conclusion I came to is, but the worst thing a representative can do is operate in a bubble. You might have your ideas, and certainly there's plenty of people in Montpelier that wanna share their ideas with you, but the smartest thing to do is reach back to your community. And, you know, I've come before this board, I reached out and had extensive communication with the Chamber of Commerce, with the RRA, with the Police Commission, with the Police Department, and with the Fire Department on issues that were coming before the Judiciary Committee and the House floor. And I received quick feedback, I received extensive feedback from people on the ground here, and that was an immense help. So I just wanna take a second to thank all of you and all those other organizations, because it certainly enabled me to be a better representative than I would have been otherwise. So that's all I have for you. Like I said, I was gonna try and keep it quick, and thank you all.
Thank you. We have a question from Alderman DePoy.
So a few years ago, in dealing with the marijuana issue, we passed an ordinance, I believe, that restricted any cannabis shops in the city, medical marijuana. That was just for medical marijuana. Correct. So maybe, and if this board wants to, maybe we can take a look at that ordinance and make some amendments as we deem fit, as the process goes. I'm not opposed to talking about it, and, you know, you mentioned the local options tax, in that I'm, on the surface right now, I'm not gonna be in favor of any of that, but I'll certainly listen to what has to be said as far as that goes as we go forward in this.
And I do think, you know, certainly, as you know, bills change throughout the entire process, but it does look most likely that whether it's opt-in or opt-out, communities will have to decide by a municipality-wide vote.
Alderman Clifford?
Well, where does the money go for the cannabis sales?
So, right now, that's, hasn't been determined. I mean, there's talk of it going to just the general fund, there's talk of it going to education. There's 800 moving pieces up there, and it seems like everything we do, whether it's clean water or education, you know, they're scooping money out of somewhere that they need to backfill. So that's one of the things that has not been determined, and quite frankly, I'm not certain that tax and regulate will pass without a real determination, other than into the normal coffers.
Alderman Gillen?
Just so people know, that all the bills are still active until next year, until the biennium is over. So people understand that all these bills are still on the wall, and they could come off the wall at any time during the session next year. So people need to understand that.
That's correct, yeah, and this was the first year of a two-year biennium, so there's nothing that's dead until the final gavel drops, hopefully a little earlier than this year, in 2020. Just as an example, so the committee I'm in, the Judiciary Committee, we passed eight bills out of our committee this year and left 38 bills on the wall. Most of those will not come off the wall, most of those shouldn't come off the wall, but there's a lot of bills floating around out there that, just as one observer and participant, I'm interested to see who runs with what.
Anybody else? Alderman E. Torrey?
I just wanna thank Representative Knott for coming and sharing with us what's going on and getting our input when it's appropriate.
Anyone else? Knott, I will just say, maybe you could speak to the folks up there who are trying to give people $10,000 to move here, and then on the other hand, they're taxing us to death. So it doesn't make a lot of sense. Maybe they could find out that balance just a little bit.
That comes up.
Okay, anything else, Bill? Thank you, we appreciate it.
Thank you all.
Is there anyone else outside the rail that would like to address the board on matters not on the agenda? Seeing none, we are on to communications from the mayor, Mayor Lehrer, is there anything?
Thank you, I just have a couple of very quick things, and it actually goes right along with what Representative Knott was saying. I'd received an email from the League in the last couple of days regarding some recording fee changes that have been taken effect today, as a matter of fact, on July 1st, and there's been some talk around that these were fees that were initiated by the City of Rutland. And I just wanted to make sure that people were aware that Bill H., or yes, H. 526, which passed this year's legislature, mandate the changes to some of the fees that are gonna be assessed in the clerk's office, and those include recording fees, recording of plats, property tax returns, and also research time in the vault. So there's gonna be an extra charge to some people using the services in there, and those were, came down compliments of the Vermont State Legislature. And one other thing I wanted to mention was that last Friday, I had an invitation to go up to Montpelier with a meeting with the Attorney General, and the AG's office is looking at pursuing some litigation with the pharmaceutical manufacturers, and there's quite a bit of discussion about if those lawsuits were to be successful, where the money would end up, and how best it would be to get it funneled into the local communities, because that's where, you know, we're on the ground here, this is where the money is needed, and we are better, a lot of us think that we're best to make those kinds of decisions about how that money would be spent. So it was more about process than anything else, but it's just the initial part of the discussion. There is currently a multi-district lawsuit out there that's based out of Ohio that multitudes-
Commissioner Oneberg.
Thank you. You may recall that the city acquired a property through tax sale on Crescent Street. At 120 Crescent Street, it was a vacant lot. And that property was sold to Habitat for Humanity for a dollar by the city to develop affordable housing for a local family. And they're in the process of putting that project together. And John Berryhill is here, representing Habitat, and can answer any questions you have about their program or about the project. He has requested waivers of basically two items, one of which, late, more recent information indicates he doesn't even need. So the two items that were requested, one was listed in the email that I received, or actually, it was a letter. And the other one was added after the fact. The first are the bonds that are posted when work is being done in the city right-of-way to install water lines or sewer lines. As it turns out, they're not gonna be required to post those bonds because the property, the house that was on that property previously, the water and sewer lines can be used again. So there will not be a requirement for them to do any excavation in the right-of-way. So the bonds will not be required. So a waiver is not required. The other one that was requested was for the sewer allocation fee, which I believe would be about $840. And that fee will apply unless this board agrees to waive it for this project. And that's within your purview. And John is here, if you have any questions about the project or their whole program.
John? Okay, so we need a motion to suspend the rules. Sorry? Who? Alderman Humphrey?
Second.
All those in favor of suspending the rules, please say aye. Those opposed, motion carries. We have put a motion on the floor, which would be just the sewer.
I'm, sorry, you had a question that I forgot. I had to do all the process first. I'll move to authorize to waive the sewer allocation.
The waiver of the sewer allocation. For $840. We have a second, okay. So you have a question?
Yes, thank you. Have we waived these fees for Habitat homes in the past?
I am not entirely sure, but I think so.
Okay.
I believe that has happened. I'm not sure if it was allocation fee or a bond or whatever in previous projects. But I know requests have been made, and I don't think any have been denied.
Okay, that's my recollection as well, I just wanted to say.
If I may, I believe that we've waived connection fees. I don't remember the allocation fee, but it's possible. Alderman Wickham?
I just need to recuse myself from the vote. I'm a board member for Habitat for Humanity.
All right, so noted. Anyone else? So John, do you wanna say anything to the, address any issue with the board before we take a vote?
Not really. I'm enjoying listening and watching the show tonight. We are gonna be starting on Crescent Street. We'll be down there Wednesday, staking the building out. And we're very excited about it. You know, we sell these homes. It's not a free ride for everybody. And we can get people back on the tax roads. So I think the homes that we build, it's all donated labor. And that's why, essentially, we're asking for a waiver, so we can take this money. Maybe it's only 800 bucks, but that's still money that we can spend on this family and this house. So we're excited to get going, and I think we're gonna do a good job for it.
You certainly have in the other neighborhoods. Alderman Gillen.
Just a question. Where is the house gonna be in the back where it was before? Or is it gonna be in front lined up with the other ones?
It's gonna be in front.
Okay.
Any other questions for the race? So the motion on the floor by Alderman Humphrey was to waive the sewer allocation fee for Habitat for Humanity for, I believe, 120 Crescent Street for $840. Any other debate? Seeing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. You're all set. Thank you. Next up is Treasurer Markowski. Board of Alderman's signature requests for RF 1236-2.0 loan document. Welcome, Mary.
Hello, so this is just a housekeeping issue on this project loan. Step two of the project to, for the final design engineering cost for the replacement of the sewer force main between River Street and the wastewater treatment plant. And this is obviously part of a much larger project. So we're just looking for the board to sign off on these loan documents for the second phase.
Alderman DePoy.
Motion to suspend the rules, take it up.
All those in favor of suspending the rules, please say aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Alderman DePoy.
Motion to circulate the loan documents for signature of the board.
Any debate on the motion? Circulate. Seeing none. All those in favor, please say aye. Those opposed, motion carries. You're all set. Thank you. Next up is Treasurer Markowski. Board of Alderman's signature requests for RF 1236-2.0 loan document. Welcome, Mary.
Hello, so this is just a housekeeping issue on this project loan. Step two of the project to, for the final design engineering cost for the replacement of the sewer force main between River Street and the wastewater treatment plant. And this is obviously part of a much larger project. So we're just looking for the board to sign off on these loan documents for the second phase.
Alderman DePoy.
Motion to suspend the rules, take it up.
All those in favor of suspending the rules, please say aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Alderman DePoy.
Motion to circulate the loan documents for signature of the board.
Any debate on the motion? Circulate. Seeing none. All those in favor, please say aye. Those opposed, motion carries.
So there's three independent documents. Two for the board to sign off, and one for you independently to sign off. So I'll send these around to the board. Just make sure you sign twice. Don't move.
And one for the commissioner. I believe the commissioner has some more information on the project.
Commissioner Oneberg.
Historically, as we've gone through this, have been the two wastewater projects, the force main project and the digester project. This request is just for the force main project. The digester project, the state and the bond bank have agreed to do both the step two, which is final design, and the step three, which is the construction altogether. So that one's not being split out separately like this one is. You will probably get one of these when we get the final design and the construction further along. And we're ready to draw down funds on that one. But the reason you don't see that one tonight is they're doing those two together in that one. But decided it would be quicker to do this than this one.
Okay, great. Okay, so we're on to reports at standing committees. Select committees, representatives. We have petitions, letters, and miscellaneous communications. We have two. Do you have these both? Okay, so downtown, street party, and sidewalk sales. These are special events permits. Alderman Mattis.
Motion to suspend the rules.
All those in favor of suspending the rules, please say aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Alderman Mattis.
I move the board to approve the special event permit application for Friday Night Live, July 12th, 19th, and 26th, from 5:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. on Center Street.
Second.
Do we have any debate on that motion? Seeing none. All those in favor, please say aye. Those opposed, motion carries. And Alderman Mattis, we have another one.
Do I need to move, does it mean the rules again? I so move.